City Council Public Attorney will come to order. Clerk will call the roll.
Counselors Kadeem, Dionne?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
La Libbidi?
Here.
Pelletier? Carrera?
Here.
Repozo?
Here.
Washington?
Here.
President Kamara?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and not deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
Motion has been made to open the public hearing, has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed? We'll take them all together as we did last time. The first one, John Gonzo's 149 Simmons Street, Rehoboth, Mass. 02769, for the renewal of curbing as follows. At 644 Prospect Street, and also on Robertson Street on the corner. Existing opening is at 644 Prospect Street is 17 feet. Curb to be removed is 14 feet on the Robertson side street. Curb to be added is none. Combined opening proposed after alteration is 17 feet on 644 Prospect Street, 14 feet on Robertson Street. Both streets combined is 31 feet. The parcel of land is on the corner lot with an existing 17-foot driveway curb opening on Prospect Street. The owner is proposing to create a new 14-feet driveway curb opening on Robertson Street. This will result in a total combined opening of 31 feet. The applicant shall also be required to repair any and all sidewalk, roadway, curbing affected by this construction activity. Item number... Is there any proponent to this public hearing? Any proponent? Is there any opponent? Opponents seeing none. We move on to the next one. Number two, Cynthia Tev's 26 McGowan Street, for the removal of curbing as follows. At 26 McGowan Street, existing opening is 12 feet. Curb to be removed is 7 feet. There's no curb to be added. Combined opening proposed after alteration is 19 feet. The parcel of land has an existing 12-foot driveway curb opening on McGowan Street. The owner is proposing to extend that opening by removing an additional 7 feet of curbing, resulting in a total of opening of 19 feet. The applicant shall be required to repair any and all sidewalk, roadway, curbing affected by this construction activity. Is there any proponent to this public hearing? Are there any opponents to this public hearing? Seeing none. We move on to item number three. 82 Hartwell Street, LLC, 82 Hartwell Street, for the removal of curbing as follows. At 82 Hartwell Street, the existing opening is 16 feet. Curb to be removed is 6.5 feet. Curb to be added is none. Combined opening proposed after alteration is 22 and 1/2 feet. The existing commercial building is serviced by a 16-foot curb opening driveway on Hartwell Street. The owner is proposing to extend the existing opening by 6 feet, 6 and 1/2 feet, for a total of 22 and 1/2 feet. The applicant shall also be required to repair any and all sidewalk, roadway, curbing affected by this construction activity. Are there any proponents to this public hearing? Seeing none. Are there any opponents to this public hearing? Seeing none, we move on to item number four. Louis Cologne, Ford Downing Street, for removal of curbing as follows. At Ford Downing Street, and actually this is on Hafford Street as well, both sides combined. Existing opening, 12 feet. On Hafford Street, curb to be removed is 16 feet. At Ford Downing Street, there is no curb to be added. Combined opening proposed after alteration is 38 feet combined between Ford Downing Street and Hafford Street. The existing parcel of land is at the corner lot with an existing 12-foot driveway curb opening on Hafford Street. The owner is proposing to create a new 16-foot driveway curb opening on Downing Street. This would result in a total opening of 28 feet. The applicant shall also be required to repair any and all sidewalk, roadway, curbing affected by this construction activity. Are there any proponents to this public hearing? You're a proponent, you're in favor of it?
Yeah.
Want to come down and speak and state your name and address, please, for the record? And speak into the microphone, please, yes.
Hi, my name is Louis.
You can sit down, it's okay.
Sit down, thank you. My name is Louis Cologne. I am the landlord of Ford Downing Street, and I have a first-floor tenant with three little children. And she's been complaining about cars driving by, and I guess there's a couple handicap spots that are almost closer to her house, and she has to park far away. And she's struggling with putting the kids in the car. So I promised her that I would fight for the driveway for her.
Okay.
There is a garage, but it belongs to the third floor, and there's no room for her car.
Okay.
And she's here today. I don't know if she wants to speak.
We don't, it's up to you. You can, if you'd like to.
No.
Okay.
I'm in favor.
All right, thank you. That's good enough for us, I think. Thank you. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents, other than the tenant who is in favor? Okay, seeing none, other... Are there any opponents to this public hearing? Any opponents? Seeing none, we move on to item number five. Carlos Estrella, 3820 North Main Street, for the removal of curbing as follows. At 3820 North Main Street, there is no existing opening. Curb to be removed is 32 feet. Curb to be added is none. Combined opening proposal after alteration is 32 feet. The owner is proposing a 32-feet curb opening to access a proposed multifamily building. The applicant has received site plan review approval. The applicant shall be required to repair any and all sidewalk, roadway, and curbing affected by this construction activity. Are there any proponents to this public hearing? Seeing none. Are there any opponents to this public hearing? Seeing none, we move on to item number six. George Brooks, 600 Montgomery Street, for the removal of curbing as follows. At 600 Montgomery Street, existing opening is 16 feet. Curb to be removed is 6 feet. Curb to be added is 0. Combined opening proposed after alteration is 22 feet. The parcel of land has an existing 16-foot driveway curb opening on Montgomery Street. The owner is proposing to extend that opening by removing an additional 6 feet of curbing, resulting in a total opening of 22 feet. The applicant shall be required to repair any and all sidewalk, roadway, curbing affected by this construction activity. Are there any proponents to this public hearing? One proponent, please come on down, state your name and address for the record.
George Brooks. I am the owner and resident at 600 Montgomery Street, Fall River.
And you're in favor of this?
I applied for it, so I'm much in favor for it.
What would you like to tell us about it? Are you coming down just a...
Well, when I bought the house, I had no driveway, no garage. So we made a driveway for my wife and I to park our cars next to each other. And 16 feet isn't a lot of room, the open doors with two cars next to each other. So we just want to make it a little bit bigger, so there's a little more room.
Fair enough. Thank you so much. Coming down, thank you. Are there any other proponents to this? Seeing none. Are there any opponents to this public hearing? Seeing none, we move on to item number seven. Martha Rosa, 97 Terry Marie Way, for the removal of curbing as follows. At 97 Terry Marie Way, there is no existing opening. Curb to be removed is 26.2 feet. Curb to be added is 0. Combined opening proposed after alteration is 26.2 feet. The owner recently purchased a new construction home with a contract to install the driveway with 26.2 feet of curb opening. Are there any proponents to this public hearing? Seeing none. Are there any...
Not a proponent.
You're a proponent?
Yeah, not a proponent.
You're in favor of it?
Yes.
Okay, come on down and state your name and address for the record, please, and state your case.
My name is Bill Dispirito, 66 Phillips Street in Fall River. I was the developer of that property. The driveway is about 26 feet wide. It was put in by a licensed contractor in the city. It turns out that it's wider than what the normal opening should be, but nobody knew at the time, and he since passed away. And we had somebody come in and pave the driveway that he had prepared. So, I mean, there were no other houses on that street but the two that I think of before you tonight. The only other openings on that street are across the street for condominium developments with about 35 feet of driveway openings. So there's no... We're not taking any parking away from any of the houses there. That's about it. I don't believe the owners are here, but I know they had a hearing, so I just came down to support them.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents to this public hearing? Seeing none. Are there any opponents to this public hearing? Seeing none, we move on to item number eight. Jamal Irish, 111 Terry Marie Way, for the removal of curbing as follows. At 111 Terry Marie Way, existing opening is none. Curb to be removed is 25.5 feet. Curb to be added is none. Combined opening proposed after alteration is 25 and 1/2 feet. The owner recently purchased a new construction home with a contract to install the driveway with 25.5 feet of curb opening. That's it. Is there any proponents to this public hearing? You're a proponent as well?
Yeah.
Come on down. You want to come down as well? You're a proponent, you're in favor of it, you want to speak? You don't have to, if you'd like to, you can.
Still Dispirito again. I was the developer of that property as well. Jamal, who's sitting right there, is the owner. So same applies. The driveway was put in by the engineer contractor that we had. We just finished it off, and that was the width of it. There's no...
Okay.
There doesn't seem to be any reason why it shouldn't be approved. It's... There's nobody that's interfering with.
I agree.
And Jamal's the owner here, if he wants to come down.
It's up to you. You're a proponent, you want to come down and speak, or you don't have to. If you want to, you can. If you don't want to, you don't have to.
As an advocate.
Okay, but you're a proponent of this, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Are there any opponents to this public hearing? Any opponents? Seeing none.
Motion to close the public hearing.
The motion to close the public hearing has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is now closed. The motion to adjourn...
Motion to adjourn?
Public hearing. Motion to adjourn the public hearing has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is now adjourned. Need to take a two-minute recess, or you guys want to keep going?
Rock and roll.
City Council Committee on Finance will come to order. Clerk will call the roll.
Counselors Kadeem, Dionne?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
La Libbidi?
Here.
Pelletier?
Here.
Repozo?
Here.
Washington?
Yes, here.
President Kamara?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and not deemed acknowledged and permissible. We have a number of individuals signed up to come before us. First, we have Charles Chase. I don't really know what the subject matter is here, I can't see it that well. Will you come down, please, Mr. Charles Chase? You have three minutes.
Thank you for allowing me to speak today, and I appreciate the way I was treated the last time I was here.
You can sit down, sorry.
You can sit down, if you'd like.
Well, before sitting down, I'm accustomed to any meeting I go to that I say the Pledge of Allegiance.
We say the Pledge of Allegiance at a regular City Council meeting, which will take place right after this meeting.
What was that?
We say the Pledge of Allegiance before we start the regular City Council meeting, which will take place right after this finance meeting. We say it at every meeting.
All right, thank you. First of all, regarding the mayor's state of the city, I have a little input. Back in the 1950s, the mid-1950s, I used to travel through Fall River and New Bedford. My father would make me close the windows and lock the doors as I was driving him out to New Jersey to work. It wasn't the nicest place in the world, we thought, and kind of dangerous. I hear danger now, but I don't feel that anymore. I've been here for about 35 years, and I think much has improved, and it's really a pleasant place to live. I just wanted to add that to what the mayor had been saying. There has been a lot of improvement here. I wanted to speak about the Armory today. Regarding the Armory, apparently it's up for sale for $200,000, according to the newspaper. And I think that's a tragedy for the city. That is one beautiful place. I myself spent many years as a curator of museums. This is one of the many jobs I did at the same time. As a curator and also as the chairman of the Historical Commission up in Middleborough, I would hate to see that building be turned into something else. I think the city could find much better uses for it and much better ways to use it, from, you know, tourism to you name it. There are a lot of things that could be done. It is in a state of, you know, under repair right now, and very dirty inside from the pictures that I saw. I hope that if something is done to save it for the city, that the citizens, we all... I will volunteer, that we have volunteers who go and help to clean that up and, you know, give it what it deserves. That was one of my worries. I pray that it is not let out of the city's hands.
You have 30 seconds left, Mr. Chase.
And the last thing I wanted to mention is regarding... Unfortunately, the school committee is not here, but it's regarding the way the schools are run. Vokism should not be used in the schools. Parents should have the right to find out what the kids are learning and how they are learning it. There are many things, such as, I was at the library and was ashamed to see some of the books that were down in the children's area. We have to rethink our, you know, morality, I would say.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chase. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Nelson Vasquez, subject matter for...
One second, while I gather myself here. Wow, Fall River, what a beautiful, crazy, stump speech that was. You know, he left out a lot of things here. Again, Nelson Vasquez, 210 Sunset Hill, Fall River. You know, as I'm sitting there, I'm shaking my head because he forgot to talk about some things that's currently going on. First, education. You see, we have school employees who work diligently to educate our children, and there's no question about that. But this is from the state, and we're not meeting expectations. Grades 3 through 8 and grades 10 across the board. And then $20 million is coming down for more education, and he cited that the budget's going to be tight, even though he is still giving out pay raises. So that's education. Crime. I mean, look, image after image, shootings, stabbings, you name it. He has done nothing to rein in the chaotic police department that our fine officers have to deal with every single day, and that decreases morale. It's so bad that just seven years ago, you know, we all know how crime was, but let's bring it further. You know, just two years ago, we were ranked seventh as the most dangerous city, according to the FBI, seventh. And then two years later, we're number one. It's all right here, number one. He didn't want to talk about that, because he has no record to stand on, because he has done literally nothing. In regards to housing, we all know what happened. He had nothing to say when the moment called for him to talk about his plan. But what's his plan? Let's transition our low-income families out from where they are. But transition where? The average rent is $1,700. We're 300 shy from what Newton is paying, and our average household income for Fall River is $46,000. Where the hell are they going to go? This is his answer. But you want to know who else is not talking about transitioning people out? It's this mayor right here, who is using upper funds to build, I don't know, affordable units to keep people inside New Bedford. This guy has just talked about more of exclusion. This is just absurd. This is his answer. Let's transition people who cannot afford $1,700. This is why New Bedford has a right, and we have a wrong. He ought to be embarrassed of himself. You know what? This was him just the other day trying on VR glasses. Okay, virtual reality. You know, it's so bad that he literally fails to acknowledge what's going on and then fails to acknowledge his own failed leadership. Yes, sir. It's that not even virtual reality will enable him to see a failing school system, high crime, and Fall River residents being priced out. This man ought to be embarrassed. He ought to just resign, because that plan he put forward is a disgrace. And when we have other mayors trying to keep their citizens in the city...
Very much.
That's imperative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Carlos Caesar, subject matter, who got invited. Three minutes, Mr. Caesar.
Thank you. Well, hello, everyone. I'm back. Happy New Year, Merry Christmas. Been a long time. But I just stayed away for a little bit because I came to the conclusion that three minutes that we give to us to address the chairman and the councils, it's not enough time. We don't have 50 people sign up to speak to you, so... But there we go, three minutes. And in the meantime, too, during those three minutes, city councils had to go to the bathroom, have to refill water, so it's three minutes they lost from our input that I think it's important.
Mr. Caesar, just want to go out. No one's going to the bathroom and filling waters. You have our full attention right now.
Okay, so who got invited? That's what I want to talk about. We have somebody on the sixth floor that this council just gave a $8,000 last year raise, that it's supposed to be working on emails and contacting us. Just for curiosity, I went back on my emails. The last time that I got an email from the sixth floor was January 10th at 3:05, 2022. And this is somebody that got $8,000 raised on the budget last year for this year. I don't know if it's another increase there, but I will look for that. Okay, so let's stop talking about La Land and talk about Fall River. And let's talk about the Flint, the state of the Flint for this year. Stabbings, shootings, I don't think we had any this year there, right? Okay, I think I got my message. Out. Economic development. New business? Two businesses had to retire because they could not sell their business, and they opened for 40 years. I have two more retiring next year because they cannot sell their business, and one of them is in business for 45 years. They're going to shop down. Why? Because they tired of fighting homeless sleeping outside their door every day. It's nothing I can do. It's no connection, it's no communication between neighborhoods and administration. It's not so that the mayor didn't even mention neighborhoods. He acknowledged residents. Well, half or the majority of the people was working for the city, so they have to be here. They have to honor their president, okay? And the others, just regular citizens. Well, let me tell you, Mr. Mayor, Niagara Neighborhood, Salt End, Maplewood, Bank Street, this is not just ordinary residents. These people worked for free, for years for this city. They want the best for this city. They're not just a regular resident. Acknowledge what the neighborhoods they come from, the neighborhoods they fight for every day. Doesn't matter who's sitting on the sixth floor. Pleasant Street Corridor was our saver, was going to save, is going to... All the buildings going to be sold again.
15 seconds, Carlos.
First meeting was January of last year. Second meeting was August of last year. Where's the corridor? Where's the economic development for Pleasant Street? I got calls asking, I don't know. I don't know anything. Call the sixth floor. I have no idea. I have no phone calls. I have no communications. And by what I saw today here, that tells me not any other neighborhoods have communications with this administration.
Carlos, we need to wrap it up, and I would suggest to you, I refer that maybe we should have a meeting in the Office of Economic Development, or maybe the council has a committee on economic development, and we could... If you want more time, that would be the appropriate place to get it, so that we can discuss this with...
I appreciate it.
Other people.
I appreciate it, Ms. Ray.
Could you wrap it up when you get a chance?
That's my three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that would be the proper channel to go down, Carlos. Next, we have Robert Balo, subject matter, Fall River.
Thank you. Robert Balo, one of five pitmen for Fall River. Got to give your hats off. I mean, he fixed public safety, he gave him a contract. Good job. Got to fix a lot of other things in this city, because I do go out and drop off supplies to homeless. And our last run, I got to tell you, it's just getting worse and worse, and I don't know what the fix is. I don't think it's the first step in, it's just not getting there. And I mean, just the bottom of Kennedy Park. First time we did it, we had two tents. Now, last count, there was 14, and the total count is well, well over 120 that we count ourselves that are out there, that hopefully got shelter for this little storm. But, I mean, I don't know what he's going to do. I heard something about Gilbert Jewelers, he was supposed to do something with that miraculously, nothing's got done. I mean, we have to do something, because it's just getting worse and worse. Every time we go, there's more. And there's families, literally, mother and son living in cars. It's just, I don't know what his plans are, but he's out of touch. He's out of touch with these neighborhood groups. And I got to give Caesar credit, I mean, I called this guy Sunday, they were down there playing hockey. Supposedly, they got security down Shelburne Shirts. This guy was sleeping in his car, or there were people in that mill. And when I told him there were people in the mill, he went right to where an open door was. Mind you, he's an armed guard, and all he did was basically brace the door. So guess what? If they lit a fire, there goes their exit. I mean, it's just... I mean, it's just, something's gotta be done about that mill. Has to be done. And they're starting to use that rink to play hockey every Sunday, and the group's getting bigger and bigger, and I've said that rink is, is damaged, it needs repair. I don't know if you guys can send somebody down there, but it really does, these guys deserve it, there's little kids playing, and it's every, every Sunday they're down there. Take a trip. They get down there about 9:30, and they played all about 12:00, every Sunday. But hopefully, we can rein in something to do with this homeless stuff because it's just getting worse. Every time we go out, there's more people, more tents. That, that's what I gotta say, I mean, we have to do it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have transfer appropriations. The mayor enforces appropriating 1A, $183,000 from the Operating Reserve Fund to, and there's a few of them, so I'm gonna do them all by order. Collector salaries for retirement buyout of $20,000. Purchasing salaries, reorganization, $50,000. City administration retirement buyout, $14,000. Code enforcement salaries, contract settlement, $87,000. Health and administrative salaries, contract settlement, $3,800. City council salaries, retirement buyout, $500. Council on aging salaries, contract settlement, $7,700. Any discussions on item 1A? Any of those? Can you come down, please? Counselor C2?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm gonna assume that two out of the three retirement buyouts, we didn't know in advance it was something that came up?
Yes, that's correct. Well, no, the second retirement buyout, there was money budgeted, it was just a little short of what the amount ended up being.
And the city administration?
No, so the city administration, we did not know about, and the collectors, we were not aware of until after the budget was passed, and it didn't happen until.
So the third one, sorry.
The third one, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, that was anticipated, just short.
Yep.
Okay, um, the reorg in purchasing salaries, is it, did we finally put somebody in that, in the position of purchasing agent?
Yes. So that had to do with the, um, the reorganization that came down months ago. This is just realigning it, so there was a person that was doing the position, but it was just a stipend for that, so we actually have a person that's dedicated to the doing that full-time, so we actually had to put a full-time salary in that line.
Yeah, I think the stipend was $10,000, give or take. It wasn't a lot. I know it wasn't, it wasn't a lot.
It wasn't a lot, yeah, and so it wasn't funded, it wasn't budgeted correctly for what, after the reorganization, which happened after the budget.
So the purchasing salary is $50,000, or it's, or is it in addition to what was already there?
There was some funds already there, so this is just to make, to, to realign the budget so there's no negative. So there were funds budgeted, there just was, it was part-time budgeting.
So what's the actual salary of the purchasing agent?
I believe it's about $70,000.
Okay. That's basically, that's, that, well, my questions, thank you, I'll, I'll yield.
No further questions, okay? We'll go on to item 1B, $1,144,000 from the EMS stabilization account, two EMS salaries for $830,000, and EMS expenses, $314,000. No questions, and I'll entertain, is there a motion?
We kinda had gone over that. We kinda had gone over that before when you, they gave them the rate and the council voted on it, so I don't have any questions.
Okay.
Motion for a vote for counsel?
Motion, it's already in for counsel. Motion to adjourn finance, there's no other, matter for finance?
Wasn't that number two?
That was three.
The water?
That's in the regular meeting.
It's in the regular meeting. This is all we have for finance.
Motion to adjourn finance.
Motion to adjourn finance has been made and seconded, on favor? Any opposed? Finance is now adjourned. City council will come to order. Clerk will call the roll.
Counselors Kadeen, Deon?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
La Liberty?
Here.
Pelletier? Ferreira?
Here.
Reposo?
Here.
Washington?
Here.
President Kamara?
Here. Will everyone in the council chair please rise for a moment of silent prayer? Please remain standing for salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting to any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made where they're perceived or unperceived by those present and not deemed acknowledged and permissible. Clerk?
Mr. President, the first item before you is the request from the mayor for two financial orders. The first is that the sum of $183,000 be in the same as hereby transferred from the Operating Reserve Fund to the following. Collector salaries, $20,000. Purchasing salaries, $50,000. City administration, $14,000. Code enforcement salaries, $87,000. Health admin, uh, health administration salaries, $3,800. City council salaries, $500. Council on aging salaries, $7,700.
Motion to accept, adopt.
Second.
Has been made and seconded, on favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And the second is, um, order is that the sum of $1,144,000 be in the same as hereby transferred from the EMS stabilization fund to the following. EMS salaries in the amount of $830,000, and EMS expenses in the amount of $314,000.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to accept communication and adopt, your order has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Second, on favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number two is a communication from the mayor and the proposed FY '24 budgets for water and sewer divisions and proposed ordinances for the fiscal year '24 water and sewer rates.
Refer to ordinance?
Second.
Motion for the budget to the Committee on Finance?
Is that appropriate?
So the budgets would go to the Committee on Finance and the ordinances to the Committee on Ordinances and Legislation?
Motion has been made and seconded, on favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item three is a, a request from the mayor and the, um, to increase the allocation from the Opera Bristol County Treasury American Rescue Plan Act, the amount of $6,456 for, which was funding for two infrared hotbox asphalt arrays for pothole and road repair.
Motion to accept communication and approve request?
Motion.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Second, on favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
For item number four, we have a number of recommendations to amend the traffic ordinances.
Motion, connect, connect.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, to refer to ordinance community legislation, on favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Whereas many schools and businesses rely on their internet and cable service providers and for accessibility and education with various mediums, and whereas there are limited provider options for obtaining these services within the city, and the providers' costs have steadily increased over time, and whereas the city's current rates cannot be renegotiated until 2032, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Finance convene with Corporation Council to discuss how the city's cable contract agreement process is reviewed, modified, and approved.
Motion for the Committee on Finance?
Motion for the Committee on Finance has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Just one question.
On, on, hold on, counsel. On the, on the motion, Counselor C6, Counselor Vice President, Pravda?
The problem I have with this is I had put in resolutions before for an update on cable, et cetera, never heard anything. All of a sudden, again, I'm checking because I'm getting calls from people concerned with the amount, you know, the price of cable, we find out that, I find out that the contract was signed in November. KP Lord, uh, Law is the one that negotiated the contract. We have a 10-year contract. I checked with colleagues in New Bedford of mine that they are saying that they did theirs for five years. The thing that bothers me the most is that we had talked about getting cable in, getting internet access in all the parks in the city. I don't even think that that was put on the table if we want to do that, I guess we have to do that now with Opera money. But there was no public hearings for people to come and talk about cable and what they felt about, you know, what was going on with cable. Many senior citizens, the cable cost is high, if they watch Lifetime or Hallmark Channel, they switch those channels into different categories, like with sports, that maybe a senior citizen doesn't want to watch sports, but they want to watch Lifetime, so in order to get that, you gotta get this, you know? And when I, I asked, when was the public hearings done? You know when they were done? 2018. Two days. One day they had it in the afternoon and at night, and the following day, they had a meeting at night, in 2018 for a contract that we signed in 2022. There's gotta be a better way, and 10 years is crazy. I know they also deregulated, I, I've talked to Congressman Arkencloster's office about that, about the deregulation, so that they can kind of charge whatever they want. Hopefully, I mean, I thought we were getting FiOS, I thought that there was wireless internet, that maybe we could get other providers to come in, but, you know, the big thing is we're getting like $1.6 million, where we got $600,000 for BCC and Durfee, to keep those getting, uh, going, and we have high res. So now, when we're on TV, guys, we're not so fuzzy, it's gonna be a little clearer. I'd rather have us fuzzy and give something to our senior citizens and veterans. But with that being said, there's gotta be a better way of doing this contract, and I think in 20 years, I may or may not be here, and I'm certainly not gonna be fighting for it, so I figure this is my opportunity to fight for it. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Motion.
Okay, no problem.
Motion was made to finance.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Whereas the Veterans Kitchen is a nonprofit volunteer organization that serves free hot meals to veterans, and whereas the services provided by the Veterans Kitchen provides not only hot food, but community engagement and events within the city, and whereas they rely on donations from residents and local businesses to fund the fresh homemade meals that are served, now therefore be it resolved that the city council support a future application for Bristol County American Rescue Plan Act funding in the amount of $50,000 to help this nonprofit organization continue to provide meals and events for veterans in the city.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, on the motion, Counselor C8, Counselor Washington?
So I, I put in this motion to get support from our counselors before we put it in because it's a, it's a big undertaking to put in these Opera fundings, but I just wanted to give a little background on this nonprofit. So they're a Fall River nonprofit that feeds our veterans. This group solely relies on volunteers. Nobody takes a salary, there's no exorbitant salaries. They are serving tremendous meals, I mean, like five-star meals to our veterans. It is so humbling to go there and see what they do. It is free for our veterans. Unfortunately, they can only do it one day a week. They rely solely on donations from the community and businesses, and they were able to continue throughout COVID. They were serving these veterans throughout COVID, and, you know, they're giving out more than they're taking in, so the least we could do is provide them $50,000 to continue to feed our vets. I recommend anybody that is here, that is watching this, see the operations that that Veterans Kitchen does. It is so humbling to see what they do for our veterans, and so hopefully, you know, they can increase their day, that's, that's ultimately the goal, but I think $50,000 is just a drop in the bucket that we could do to support their efforts in feeding our veterans. They provide them clothes, activities, and I'll tell you what, it's full of our veterans that go down there. It's not like, you know, one or two, it is full of them, so, you know, I'm just looking for support from my colleagues to put that in, so with that, I yield.
Thank you, counsel. Counselor C7, Counselor Poso?
Yeah, just a question to my colleague in C8. Under what classification would this fit for, for Opera money? Do you have a sense?
Yeah, well, you know, the Opera funding is to restore the community and stuff that was taken away, so they continue to operate out of need and were unable to do that, and so for outreach, so this is a huge outreach effort that I would say that that would fall underneath, so they can continue to outreach to the veterans.
All right, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Counselor C4, Counselor Liberty?
Thank you. So I have been to the Veterans Kitchen many times and, and understand everything that they do there, and, and it is an amazing organization, all volunteer. I guess I, I just have a couple of questions. I was hoping the city administrator was gonna be here because I didn't have a chance to reach out to him, but.
He's on vacation this week.
Uh, through the President to my colleague in C8, I guess what is the $50,000 going to be used for? For food and supplies and, and things of that nature?
Yes.
I'm asking because I, someone had said, oh, it might be about purchasing a building?
No, I, please, those, those poor buggers, I think, should get out of that building that they're in, but they're there, so it's, they literally, um, to continue to provide food and possibly add on another day, I mean, they're constantly getting new veterans, and I mean, they're here, but yeah, food.
So then I guess, then my only other question is, um, and I don't know, perhaps you or Counselor in C6 knows the answer to this, um, the Veterans Advisory Board that was put together last year by the city administrator, is that happening?
So, yeah, we have, but we haven't met since the new, um, the new VSO has come down.
Okay, and then my other question is, I know at one of the last meetings, funds were given to each of the veterans organizations. I always want to give to our veterans, and I want to support this, but I also want to make sure it's fair that any other veterans groups that are, are in need, that, that it's fair across the board for everybody, don't want them to think we're, you know, favoring one over the other, so if, if either of you have, I know we gave, there was certain amounts given to each group, but from that board.
Every group got this, every group.
Hold on, hold on, let us, if you have a question, just to the chair, I don't want someone answering without being called upon.
If, if either of the veterans liaisons could answer that question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Every group got the same amount of money, you know, to do, their quarters money, to do what they had to do with, but right now, the Veterans Kitchen was under the umbrella of the War Council. However, they have gotten their own 501(c)(3) and they're independent. So as Michelle, I believe, with Counselor Deon, would be able to tell you, some of the nonprofits that received Opera funding from the city, so this is no different, that it's a nonprofit that we're trying to support them. Even through COVID, they were making meals and, and people were coming and picking them up or delivering them when they couldn't all be together, but they're struggling with, you know, keeping up with supply and demand. Angels Anonymous went by last Wednesday when I was, uh, last Wednesday when I was there, this, tomorrow they're not having it, but they went by with food and, and donations that they had so that they supplied them as well, which was a good thing, and people donate, and they're doing it all on donations and little, little fundraisers that they may have. I know Dawn was thinking of having something to celebrate the Titanic and have a meal and sell tickets to try to raise funds on their own. But, and when Counsel Washington talked about the quality of food that they serve, Chef Sandy, who's there, or Chef Rob, they are both educated chefs, and the food that they make is, is very good, very healthy, and there's a lot of camaraderie. For some of the veterans, that's the once a week that they get to be out and talk to other people. So, I mean, I was in support of the $50,000 because they could, they could use it for all the work that they do.
Okay, um, thank you.
You're welcome.
With that, I yield. Oh, actually, I'm sorry, one last question to Counsel Washington. Is this gonna be coming down in a, in an app, in a specific ask?
So I'll have to sit with Kara and go through the whole application, it's quite that process, so.
And then, um, Counsel President, I had asked the, um, Madam Clerk on the break, I had thought, um, at one point, we had added the veterans to one of our council committees, or, or we at least talked about it, but I, it didn't, it never happened, and, um, I think that should happen, and maybe I have to do that in the form of a, a resolution, but I think the veterans should absolutely be included in one of our standing committees, maybe it's.
should absolutely be included in one of our standing committees. Maybe it's Human Services. But I will put that in the form of a resolution. I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, seat two. Counsel, Dion. Just so my colleagues know, I'm calling you based. I want to see your hands go up. Initially, the three of you raised your hands, and the Counsel, Dion, raised them afterwards. And then you raised your hand after that, and she thought you raised it. But don't get upset, Counsel, if you're called on the last, because I'm calling everyone on the way their hand goes up. So I'm not picking on anyone. I don't care who speaks, as long as you want to talk. Raise your hand if you get called on that order. Counsel, seat two.
So I have no problems supporting veterans whatsoever. I think it's something very important that needs to be done. I find it odd that we would vote and show favor on a future application. It would seem to me that you would vote after you heard the applica, after the application was submitted and you knew exactly what the situation was. In terms of the sale of the Corky Row Club, I, the Veterans Kitchen, from what I understand, is in the process of trying to purchase the Corky Row Club for $50,000. There was a post by one of the members of the, on Facebook, in regard to the, the day the vote was taken by the Corky Row members to sell the club to their organization, which really is neither here nor there. I was just following up on Counsel, seat four's question. The City Opera Committee put aside money for nonprofits. Any, any nonprofit organization can submit an application to the City Opera Committee. It has a cap of $50,000 that this would be exactly what that was set up for. I personally would like to follow their example and set up a veterans', a veterans' fund, like they set up a non, a nonprofit organization fund so that we include all veteran organizations. Because these aren't the only, the only, this is not the only organization that feeds people. It's not the only organization that helps clothe people. There are other veterans groups that do do it in the city. And any veterans group can come forward for funding. I would like to see, to start with, a $100,000 fund with a $25,000 cap that all veteran organizations could apply for funding. For example, Pine Street feeds people. They could also put in an application for the funding, for what they do. The VFW on Bedford Street needs a new roof. They could apply for funding, and this funding can be used for that purpose. And how I know that is I had a conversation with Kara, the director, and she was the one who said that, yes, that funding can be used for a new roof. And that she also felt that she would like to see it also be inclusive of all organizations. Let, you know, let them put in the applications, let them all come forward, and share the pie with everyone as opposed to only one group. I'd like to see all veterans, all organizations, because they're all out, there's many of them out there that are helping each other, helping veterans, helping families. And for my part, that's what I would like to see. I would like to see a fund set up and everybody get an equal share of the pie. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel, seat six. Counsel, Vice President, program.
A couple of things. Number one, Pine Street does feed people. But Pine Street has a line item at the state where they automatically get money from the state. I think they're getting close to a million dollars.
Counsel, hold on, Counsel. Counselors, I can hear this discussion.
I think they get close to a million dollars. They get money from the state. As far as every organization getting the same amount of money, I agree with that. And that's what the VSO does. So perhaps we should talk to the VSO. Not every organization needs additional money besides the money that they get from quarters. But Pine Street does get money. And they, they are a line item. When Al Heron was a state rep, that was put in as a line item then. And they get a lot of money every year from the state as well. This is a nonprofit that doesn't get any money from the state. So that's the difference. As far as any place needing a roof, I think you need to look at, was there a loan taken out to repair the building? How much money was given last year by the former VSO to repair the roof or other things that are done there? Because there were things that are done. And those, I think the commander of the War Veterans Council this year happens to be Charlie Denmead, who's the commander of the AMVETS and nine other organizations, and here, and the VSO, who's working with them on doing that. As far as I know, I don't even think that they were cooking anymore at Pine Street because they need an ansul system and they need all this stuff, that the food is coming delivered from a church. So it's not like pitting one against the other. We want to be able to help them all. But others do get help, do get money, do get assistance from churches, just like, quite frankly, the Vet Center. I mean, they get help from the church that comes to the Vet Center to feed. But also on Easter or a Christmas, a big holiday meal, when so many people come, there's not enough room and the parking is difficult at Corky Row. So they end up going to Father Rob's Church, and they bring, you know, their stuff to cook. We go and we help from there. So there's a lot of other things. I just think that they don't have it at this point. And if they can get 50 from the Opera on your side, fine, from, you know, the city, fine. But if they can get it, because we have control over what, the money from Bristol County Opera. We have control over that. So that's why, and I honestly think, why would you have Kara, the Opera person, write up a whole thing if we're not going to have consensus on the council? If there's consensus, then she writes it up and it comes back to us. But at least there's consensus. Why work, it's like you're putting the cart before the horse. Let's know that this is something the council's in agreement with, and then she can write it up. I think doing it the other way is wasting her time if the majority of us don't feel that this is a worthwhile expenditure of Opera dollars. I don't know. That's my thoughts on it. But with that, I yield.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel, seat eight.
I hope I was able to clarify.
Counsel, Washington.
Yeah, so to clarify some of the confusion that you had, why I brought this down was this exact reason. So not to have to go through the whole application and then, you know, there's miscommunication out there. So let, let me just piggyback on Counsel, seat six, the miscommunication. Those organizations, Pine, there are people that take salaries. They are not able to feed people right now. The Veterans Kitchen are cooking and feeding people solely based with nobody taking a salary. So I personally think we should be able to give them way more than $50,000. I think it's great that $50,000 come from that side and $50,000 come from this side. They are feeding veterans, our veterans. The world, there's tables full of World War II veterans. So if you want to cap it at $25,000, if I be it for you, you'll have time to vote. But they deserve far more than $25,000. That group is solely based on volunteers. They're clothing them, they're feeding them, they're so, so hopefully that clarifies some of that. And the, the VFW, the VFW has given money to do that roof. I don't think the roof has been done. I don't know. But, so to give them more money so everyone's equal playing grounds. It's not equal playing grounds because that group isn't taking a salary. You have five-star chefs cooking for our veterans in a dignified manner. So we need to be able, I think, to support them. So you'll be able to vote your way, but this is why I brought it here, so we can clear up any miscommunication. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel, seat two.
So first of all, they were just examples of other groups. There's plenty of people out there that are feeding people for free. You're not getting salaries. That, that's not the issue. And like I said, it's not that I don't support these people and their endeavor. I think what they're doing is great. My point is, there already is nonprofit funding available at $50,000 through the city Opera funding. That's number one. That's the dollar amount that's here. That's what they can get approved for with the city. If the city council were to set up a fund with the Bristol County money with a cap of 25,000, they probably could apply to both and end up with 75,000.
Or 100,000.
So I'm not trying to cut, I'm not trying to cut anybody's throat. I'm not trying to not support anybody. But I'm sure there are veterans groups out there that also can you, could use some assistance. I just want to be all-inclusive, not exclusive. And again, we're talking about a future application. An application hasn't been filed. I think we could have a better discussion if, if it were filed already. Just, I, I would make a motion to set up a fund available for all veterans groups to be able to apply to. That's, I don't think that's a bad thing. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel, seat four. Counsel, Liberty.
I yield.
Counsel, seat eight. Counsel, Washington.
I yield.
Counsel, seat three. Counsel, Kirby.
Debate's always good, but I think this is unnecessary debate. I think the intent of the resolution is great. I mean, we all, all want to help our veterans, especially, you know, our elderly veterans. And $50,000, in my opinion, is not enough. But I just do want to state this. A resolution is only an expression of the city council's intent. So it'll go up to the mayor's office, an application will be prepared, and we'll vote on an application. And when that comes down, I'm sure when we make our vote, we can amend it if we want to increase the appropriation or not. So again, debate, debate is great, but I, I really like Wash, Counsel Washington's passion on this. And I think it's, it's a great start. My counsel, colleague to my right wants to do, amplify that and do something more. Then I urge her to put in a resolution in, which specifically states that. I'm sure you'll get unanimous support of that. So, that I yield. Thank you, Counsel Washington.
What's that, Counsel? Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have a citation for Blessed Trinity Parish, the 125th anniversary.
I got it.
As your motion to adopt a citation for Blessed Trinity has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to take eight through 15 to go up.
Second.
Motion to take, Kirby moves.
Um, Mr. President, could I take item nine out of there?
Then let's do item eight, nine, and then we'll go.
I'm sorry, yeah, it is nine.
Let's do item, let's just keep going.
Okay.
We'll make Counsel Kirby's motion after item nine.
Item eight is a curb removal, permission granted, order granting permission to John Goncalves to remove 14 feet of curbing on Robison Street at 644.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item nine, nine is the order granting permission to Cynthia Tevz for the removal of seven feet of curbing at 26 McGowan Street.
Could we, I make a motion that that be referred to Committee on Regulations?
Motion has been made to refer item number nine to Committee on Regulations. Is there a second?
The.
Second.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to refer. Excuse me? I'm sorry, do you want to put in Public Works Transportation instead?
Transportation, fine.
That's fine.
But, Mr. President, just so that, I should have, I know I was chatting over there before. I received a call on this McGowan Street. The owner of the property claims that she did not make this request, that someone else is making it. So I think we need to get that clarified before permission is given.
Good point, Counsel.
Shouldn't go to Public Works and try to.
Motion has been made to refer to.
He's putting Public Works Transportation.
Transportation and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Good question.
Your question, Counsel, seat seven. Counsel, pose up.
To Counsel Ferraris' point, do we have the application?
Yes.
Is it squared away, good, and all that? Who's the, who's the person who requested it?
We're looking into it now, Counsel.
It says on here.
They're, they're looking.
Cynthia Tevz.
Do you need me to take a recess?
Um, yeah, we, we do have an application. And we get every, we get all the sign-offs and everything. So I'm not sure.
We have an application.
There was some confusion when it was received by an applicant. There was someone that stopped by the clerk's office, so I'm not sure. This could be, there's no notation on it, so I'm not sure if this is the one, but if Counsel or.
That is the one.
Okay.
Because the woman indicated to me when she called that she came to City Hall and this person doesn't own the property and she owns the property. And I don't know the details of it, so let's find out.
I believe it was the daughter that may have spoken to you.
So.
Yeah.
So who, who's the owner of the property?
Well, the person here is Cynthia Tevz. So I think the owner of the property, I think it is Cynthia Tevz is the owner.
There's two names.
Because that is the applicant.
Counsel, seat four.
And Carol Noun, N-O-U-N. Nolan, excuse me, Nolan. So that's two names.
There's two names listed on the property card.
Yeah.
Right. On the website, it shows two names.
But the, I'm sorry, who, who, just to clarify, who is on the application?
Cynthia Tevz.
Cynthia Tevz is on the application, but the own, property owner is Cynthia Tevz and Carol Nolan.
And Ms. Tevz is saying that she didn't file this?
The other owner is saying that she didn't file that.
The other owner, okay.
Supposedly. The best way to get our answers is to refer it to the committee and it'll get worked out. The owner will show up, the applicant will show up, and we'll decide whether we want to go any further. Motion has been made and seconded. Refer to Committee on Transportation, Public Works. And seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Can we take items 10 through 15?
Motion to take items 10 through 15 has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, items 10 through 15, please, could you just read them?
Items 10 through 15 are orders granting permission to remove curbing at the following addresses. 82 Hartwell Street LLC, is remove six and a half feet of curbing at 82 Hartwell. Louis Cologne, for removal of 16 feet at 4 Downing Street. Carlos Estrella for the removal of 32 feet at 3820 North Main Street. George Brooks for the removal of six feet at 600 Montgomery Street. Marta Rosa for the removal of 26.2 feet at 97 Terry Marie Way. And Jamal Irish for the removal of 25.5 feet at 111 Terry Marie Way.
Motion to approve.
Motion to adopt items 10 through 15 has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 16 is the application for the renewal of an auto repair shop license at 163 and 165 Aberdeen Street for Aberdeen Auto LLC.
Motion to approve.
Motion to adopt has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Have the police chief's report.
Motion accept, place on file.
Motion to accept and place on file has been made, no, motion to adopt, actually, has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have requests for the acceptance of streets for Wayland Street. We have a number of them. Wayland Street from North Main to Adadeen. Highland Farm Road from Highland Avenue to Hayfield Lane. Steep Brook Terrace from Highland Farm Road to Terminus. Old Pasture Way from Highland Farm Road to Terminus. And Hayfield Lane from Highland Farm Road north and south to Terminus.
Motion would be referred to the planning board?
Yes.
Motion so made.
Motion has been made.
Second.
And seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 19, drain layer licenses.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt drain layers license has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That's all we have.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? City Council meeting is now adjourned. Good night, everybody.